Committee of the whole meeting will now be in session. We can forego the Pledge of Allegiance, but we would like to do another roll call. Mr. Scott?
Ms. Oldson.
Here.
Mr. Miller.
Here.
Mrs. Bell.
Here.
Mr. Strobel.
Here.
Mr. Scott here. Mrs. Leonie.
Yes.
Mrs. Thompson.
Here.
Ms. Oldson.
Here.
You're all here.
Okay, procedures for public participation have not changed since 20 minutes ago. Do we have any agenda edits?
No.
Do any of the board members have agenda edits for the Committee of the whole that they want to bring forward? I just want to let everybody know there will be an executive session following the meeting to discuss personnel and ready for superintendent's report.
Thank you, Madam President. As you all know, we're entering our third week of our 2020-21 school year, and it is great to see our students get back in the building, back into learning in some format in in-person format, having the opportunity to visit all the buildings in the district on multiple occasions and also visit some of our playing fields and our student participation in the additional career activities and the smiles in the face of the students and being back as normal a way as we can possibly get this pandemic. It's great to see that our staff members, our professional staff members, our support staff members back in front of our learners, learners doing what they do best, and that's teaching our kids in the circumstances that we are in, doing the best that they can in the environment. So that's good to see, having the opportunity to talk to some staff members in front of the buildings and students. It's been an experience, having to have that happen. Nevertheless, you know, the circumstances with our staff and students having to wear the face coverings and so is distancing when the greatest extent feasible is for recommendations. So, you know, our staff and students are doing a great job in those regards. Teachers are delivering our instruction in a blended environment with our digital learning platform and our in-person platform, both the elementary and secondary level, and are getting through some of the challenges, the early challenges that we've had with that. Our instructional coaches, our professional learning coaches have been accessed quite frequently by professional staff, which is, which is great to see, and it's great to have that resource for professional staff to be able to access that support that has approved those positions last year for that. Our Logitech devices continue to be rolled out, getting the hands of our professional staff, and during that, we're having some challenges in getting those out, but we are starting to remedy that and continue to reference our health and safety plans and contact the Department of Health if necessary for recommendation and guidance, as we had to do today. Obviously, they're pretty busy, the Department of Health, until the end of the day that we get the most accurate information, correspondence they sent out to our community did come a little bit later than what I would have likely were anticipating. So that was a result of a long day's worth of correspondence back and forth with the Department of Health on recommended recommendation and guidance on what to do with the COVID situation we experienced today with one of our learners. So, you know, all in all, we're getting through this. You know, I am proud of our staff, you know, from administrators, professional staff, support staff, and our students for being able to make these workings partner with the rest. Thank you, that's all I had, Madam President.
Thank you, Dr. Cooper. Since I do know that there is somebody waiting to make some comments to us, we'll go ahead and allow for that public comment now, if that's okay. And I do want to say, if you don't get to everything here, I will read it in full, and it will be attached as to the meeting minutes, but, you know, we are going to have to limit you to three minutes.
Yeah, let me explain. The second sheet of paper is, I'm basically giving you a few perspectives, one for me as being classroom, the other one for my wife, who is a health assistant major. So I figured, well, she should.
Fair enough, yeah.
So I just gave you that sheet.
All right.
All right, I'll try to be agreeable, but again, my name is Paul Pennington, I did more than 210 hours of driving. This is my 28th year in the district. So when I keep writing, you're always trying to find a hook. So don't be scared about that title there where I glossed off words that came to bed. I was looking for a hook to get your attention. But what I wanted to do was I wanted to just give you some insight on what I see as possible issues and maybe ways that we can make things a little bit better at the elementary. So I just wanted to kind of have you heard my letter that I have here. So anyways, a couple of the issues that I've seen so far, it's obviously crowded classroom. So if you went with the six feet between students, you're basically talking about 36 square feet per student, and they're right in the center of it. So you're looking at possibly 14 students per hallway being the side question coming down right now. Something we're creeping up, like just today, I got one of my virtuals came in person, and now I found out that I'm getting another student. So that puts me at 20 students in person. And again, with our classrooms, they're decent size, but it's tough to get that social distancing that is needed. Also, with our hallways, I know that Mrs. Weber tried to do the best that she could with the situation that we have of trying to get everybody situated in the cafeteria and have them socially distant. We do have some students in the main hallway with the arts men or GM or musicals where they're sitting against the wall, and they have their trifles on. But then we need to get kids to cafeteria instead of the greatest students, like four feet behind me that are walking in that hallway. Now, they're all masked, but even so, those students that are in the hallway, you would think would have a higher chance of getting something than if they're walking sitting in the cafeteria that are socially distant. We had read about the contact cleaning throughout the day, high contact cleaning. Today, we have not been. Now, I will tell you, at least it's probably, since, I don't know if any of you remember Wes Corwin, but he was custodian at the Elementary Building, the guy was fantastic. He was just, he was on his own CD with how everybody was clean all the time. And we really haven't seen that in the elementary level, and things look fantastic, but how everybody's keeping it clean. I had a team come in before I left today around 4:30, and they went down on desk and everything, told me to spray later on. So it really looks like they're doing a good job there. But as for with the contact cleanings going today, I don't really see that coming. Am I out of time? Can I?
Finish your.
All right. So I'm getting to the more important issues here, but the reading specialists and math intervention, they've got six individuals now, we no longer have, are sold. So there were people that would contact, like the thing central, or they would contact reading sheet, and they would actually be as an liaison for us, so we could have a resource through what we should pull on the kids, group of classrooms. That, we no longer have that at our disposal. And more importantly, they are also providing remedial work or instruction for our students at the struggle. So obviously, they're no longer available, all right? So advantage really important for our MTSAS model. So I don't know how we can get around that potential resource that we've got.
Okay. So I am going to stop you there after that last point, because I knew that that was one of the key points having to do with education, but I will take a look at this. Let me just say, in general, it really, it's hard for me knowing that what we are managing to do in the classroom, in the virtual environment, and in the buildings is not 100%. It concerns me on all levels that, you know, what we can, what we are doing so far is not 100%. I know that, we all know that, and we're all trying to get there. You know, I want to always do what's best for our students, but then I know also what the realities are around us right now, you know, are not, you know, really leading us to providing everything the way that we would want to do it in a normal year. And then that leaves us with doing the best we can in an abnormal year, and I think we're still getting there. Some of the things that you were talking about, about cleaning and distancing, in the meeting that we just had, you're going to hear Mr. Strobel have a report from our facilities meeting, the same stuff that Mr. Biggerstaff brought up, that those are the challenges, and those are the things that he's trying to get better, you know? So I, I'm listening to anybody who comes to me with, you know, information about things that we can do better. I don't, we can't always implement everything that people want us to, to make things better, but we're trying to listen because, you know, I'm not in every building every day, you know? And even, you know, Dr. Cooper gets into the building a lot more than other superintendents in the past sometimes did, but, you know, he can't be there every day, you know? And so some of those ideas, just keep them coming. And, you know, we'll try to keep that dialogue open to make things, make an improvement. If anybody else wants to comment on those issues right now on the board, feel free.
I would just say, with our five employees today, I fear you're going to get the best instruction out of teachers, if you provide them the best situation. And I don't feel an elementary school has the reaction to have that. So just like if you think about your parent, if you think about how your day went and how you interact with your child at the end of the day. So if you had a bad day, or if you had a great day, that'll change your interaction with the child, whether you like it or not. So the same thing happens with all of us.
Yeah.
We have our stress level high, we're not going to be offering the best instruction we can, and the kids aren't what they're most out there for, they have.
I absolutely agree with that, and on the other side of that, because I'm teaching virtually, and it's probably the worst experience of my life. So my question is, is what, other than your coaches and possibly being a clean cleaner or aunt during the day, and what can we do to maybe better? I mean, are you asking for a different model? Are you asking for modifications to what's happening? Like, what is the goal?
I would, but.
I'm not being sarcastic, I'm actually saying, like, what do you want?
Like, for example, with a modification, like, if there was agents through the building to provide teachers with, let's say, a half a day new service, maybe twice a month or once a month, something where we can just catch our breath and try and get everything working. With these secondary, they kind of have that. So they have a virtual day, and that's something we do not have. So you're always, with the way your schedule is right now, I have about 25 minutes without my students per day if I decide not to stay in my room for special, with exceptions of gym. So if you could modify it that way. I know it's probably highly unlikely, because I mean, if you get some numbers down.
No, that absolutely makes sense, and I know the community are needing a little inventory, like I get, like totally understand. But that's what I was trying to really add, is like, I didn't know if you were getting this whole model, if you just wanted to modify it, or like, I didn't know what you were voting for. But secondary is true, because they, their children switch, and they have study models and whatnot, that gives time to like, when your Zoom doesn't work and it takes all day, there's nothing you can do, so try to fix it for them, and that's horrifying and embarrassing.
Right.
Yeah, that's on record, like, we're supposed to talk about that.
And thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you for your luck.
Thank you.
Do we have any other comments right now? Oh, I turned off my mic.
Can we go to Lena and you go?
I'm sorry. Can you work differently on that?
Okay, I mean, hit, and again, I'd like to speak to you on behalf of the teachers and the Education Association. I want to reiterate some of Mr. Pennington's comments and Dr. Cooper's. Again, there is so much good that is happening right now. Seeing the kids' faces in school just really hits home how important personal relationships are in education. All virtual learning is not, is not good. I've been facing the kids every day, how patient they are. Yes, we find ourselves still tethered to our desks. Those Logitech cameras are not rolled out to the vast majority of teachers. So you're stuck at your desk, you're stuck with your little iPad, trying to provide a decent education, and that is extraordinarily difficult. But I know that that's going to improve, we'll continue working on that. But I also want to reiterate, when those cameras are available, we've had one 30-minute demonstration, so that's going to be a whole new learning curve that we're going to have to experience with an audience watching us try to figure this out. But again, these are things that can't be helped. The one thing that I want to add to what we should be doing is I respectfully ask you to please, please be proactive, particularly in the Avenue Building. As Mr. Pennington has shared, the social distancing in that building is not possible. Classrooms of 20 students, the situation that he was referring to is in the lunchroom to make more space in the cafeteria. Students are eating in the hallway. They're unmasked because they're eating. The hallways are mobbed with children. When we get a case in that building, my fear is that it will not be an isolated one, that it will spread rapidly throughout that building. And I would really like to get ahead of that situation. There must be a better way to spread kids out for eating that they're not getting exposed in this way. I agree, my push for the model from the very beginning was to have the elementary model match the secondary one, just to give the teachers a little bit more time to, like, we're building the plane while we're flying it, I think I said that the last time I was up here, trying to develop online curriculum while instructing it with new technology is just so, so, so difficult. So anything you can do to provide additional support to teachers right now, not for our sake, but for the sake of the students. But again, I just really want to reiterate the need for amendment with the situation in that building. We must be going with this.
Thank you.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Scott, how many of those 125 cameras are actually functioning?
We have 58 deployed, named classroom, screened out. 58.
58.
He is going around wherever necessary, and I hope, because six is right, and we are going to set up.
In all four buildings?
In all, three buildings, those we got started.
Okay. Okay. Do we have any other general comments before we move on to the meat of the meeting from the public? Thank you to my fellow board members for being patient on that one. So moving on to finance. I don't think there's anything. Other than, I did want to comment to thank the Optimist Club for making a donation for the use of the band, and I wanted to thank the Blazer Education Foundation for making a donation for the use for literacy in the park. I'm assuming for next summer that donation is for? Doesn't say.
It doesn't say, I would have to confirm that.
Yeah, but I do appreciate their support of those programs, especially right now, we need them more than ever. Any other comments or concerns or questions for either Ms. Haynes or Dr. Cooper on the finance stuff from the board?
I think we have one, we can add.
Go ahead.
And if this is concerning the Social Security payroll tax approval term.
Right.
As a district, we've decided not to opt in to that, and I'm excited generally, and citizens are prepared, and I don't want to put anybody in a situation where they have to pay it back. So I think this, the district decided that we're not comfortable in here, and I'm excited communication not to be tied to this.
So just to, I don't know if anybody, everybody could hear that, the Social Security deferment, payroll tax deferment, the district has decided not to opt in to that, and there would be an email going out to all staff that gets paid directly by the district spelling that Any other concerns from the board for anything that's, it's all pretty much beginning of school year stuff? Okay, any public comment on finance items? Okay, personnel, A, B, and C, still, for the appointments, there will be names by the time there is a board meeting next, but is there any? Oh, and, oh, I didn't say something. I wanted, when we voted on resignations, I had wanted to say something, when we voted during the special voting meeting, I wanted to say something about Ms. Tapia. She will be leaving us for bigger and better things, and she's been a great help to me, I don't know, and to the rest of the board for the three and a half years that she's been doing this job, and she's had other responsibilities for her personally, the district, so she will be missed, but under this listing of appointments, we will be naming somebody to replace her, to do, to fill her very big shoes, because she can't be replaced. Do we have any comments on any of the other personnel items?
Can I just make a quick comment about Ms. Tapia?
You bet.
For everything you've done.
Yes.
You've saved me quite a few meetings, and you've given me a lot of information. So thank you very much, I've got a very good feeling.
Yeah, me too. Any, so if there's no comments from the, or any concerns or questions from the board from any of the things under personnel? If not, do we have any public comment on personnel items? Okay, seeing none. And moving on to public content, oh, yeah, I see. Okay, moving on to programs. We'll have, we're going to be getting rid of some older textbooks. Any comments or concerns from the board on that?
Like, will we never offer this course again? Like, will they be dated by the time I have it?
Of course, it's honors, of course, and that's not going to be for a long time.
Okay. Just making sure we don't find out here.
Okay, yeah, no, I get it.
We can certainly hold it for a year, and we don't have the disposal at the outset, basically, so we're just.
Oh, okay, but the agenda is calling for disposal, so.
We're to work, so.
Yeah, yeah, no, I get it.
Is there a possibility of that?
So what's the, so what is honors Algebra I, was that a, was that a high school class?
As we map out the courses, so, for what has been aligned Algebra I, first, we get Algebra I to middle school, and the highest one, there's no such thing as honors Algebra.
Yeah, but that's, I'm just reading what's up.
But I'm just, no, that's, it's a, it's a, what that means is really about moving certain standards versus others. So Algebra I is out for long, and if you go to P D and S A, there won't be space for curriculum to sit honors anywhere. So we're bringing us up more aligned with that curriculum. So if you take Algebra I in the middle school, it's the same as Algebra I, of course, you can't let us, when you pick out two, that type of, some people are out of middle school, that's linked for our most, most strong massed students, taking that course in.
Okay.
That's progression to make it, I would, we might as well, there's some friction there.
And so the idea was that this was a, this was a different textbook than what's offered to the other students for Algebra I, so we were going to be moving to using the same textbook for everybody, you know, who takes Algebra I, instead of having one group of, one cohort of kids taking, using a different textbook. Okay.
Just making sure.
Yeah, no, I get it.
I got one extra that I might hope we just do textbooks.
Yeah. At the, for current Algebra I, do we have enough? Do we have enough textbooks right now, or would we have to purchase more?
That was one of the purposes with Strobel, is they have the Mac.
That's, that's what I was wondering. Okay, okay, so it won't, it won't mean that we need to, yeah, we'd be short. Yeah, I get that. That's a good, good, good question, so. Do we have any public comments on programs? Seeing none. Presentations by board members. Ms. Scott.
So I'm going to defer my comments back to you if there wasn't any response.
So just today, I don't know if every board member received it, but at least more than one did, received an email from a, from a parent, you know, just beseeching us as a board to remember to, remember to keep not just the tasks that our teachers are, you know, performing every day in mind, but also keep their mental health in mind, and, you know, that they're all, you know, they're all like, you know, revving in the red, all of us, you know? And I will say, for my own part, I thanked her for the reminder. I have a tendency as a human being, it's more than you wanted to know about me, but, you know, when I'm stressed, which I am because 2020, you know, I will, I tend to, you know, go home and sit on a couch and watch as much Escape as TV as I can, and, you know, I just don't want to hear from anybody, I don't want anybody to tell me I'm doing a good job, I don't want anybody, I don't want to hear from anybody. And, and because I feel that way, I forget that I need to reach out to other people because not everybody responds to crisis the way I do. And so it reminded, you know, I try as much as I can when I'm here to find the opportunities that are appropriate to say how much I appreciate our teachers and all the staff, because this is, this is a Herculean effort with, you know, less than perfect technology, less than perfect situation, and, you know, and also not every teacher comes to these meetings, so they don't get to hear me say thank you and that we appreciate you. So I have to do a better job of reaching out, and that's, that was what that, that one piece of correspondence that we received, I just wanted to spell that out. You know, I'm not good at being touchy feely, I'm sorry. But I do appreciate all that everyone's doing. I am going to take it in mind that, you know, maybe we need to take a step back sometimes and remember that what we're asking of teachers and parents and students sometimes can be too much, and we all need to just step, step back and take a breath and figure out what we can do to make, make things a little easier for everybody. So that is what I wanted to say about that. Do you have any other, any other comments on, from? I think you all, I think a lot of you received the same email. Okay, just, just me.
I saw it, I saw it.
Okay.
I think it was everyone got me.
I would like to add, as always, I really appreciate the effort, everybody, obviously, it's a challenging situation for everyone involved, and the effort is unbelievable. I mean, you're right, it's trying to change the tires for our road drive. The effort is appreciated, and we're going to have to take into consideration whatever advice, whatever we can do to try to improve the situation.
Right.
So I also want to jump on that a little bit, too, and just say, I wanted to almost interrupt you when you were speaking, but I mean, we all appreciate what you're going through. I mean, I don't, I think we're all parents here, I mean, I have three kids in the school district here, so I know what you're going through, and I know what my kids are going through, and I have three others go through, so I, you know, I know how hard this is, and we really appreciate what you're going through.
And I just want to say very thankful thank you to the teachers for their work.
Okay.
I'm sharing all that I can here, by the way.
Um, so, um, moving on to BCIU report, Mr. Miller.
Uh, yes, there was a meeting August the 20th, mostly procedural policies and, uh, so there was a one a statewide agreement that was ratified, as most of are aware, the BCIU does a lot of work throughout the state. They had another agreement that they ratified to provide services for classroom diagnostic tools throughout the state, so that's something else they picked up and continue to do. And then there was one other item that caught my attention, is they ratified an agreement with Wyomissing and Boyertown for services related to ingenuity. So I I don't know if that's something that we couldn't get into, or if Boyertown, Wyomissing is already there, or I I I don't know if they were able to approve another agreement. But I know we had to miss out on some, we had to go to an initial.
Oh.
That's it, I don't have any.
Okay, what, um, have they set a next meeting or is it?
Yeah, it's, uh, it's the third or fourth Thursday, it's Saturday, it's Thursday.
And it's in person right now?
Um, well, actually, this one, in fact, not all virtual, they had a hybrid basket with this one as well.
Okay, okay. All right, um, moving on to a BCTC report, Mr. Scott.
So it, sorry, so it's a rather long report, but frankly, nothing really pertains back to annual.
Okay.
As far as the next meeting, I believe it's the 23rd, I'm gonna say. Yeah, we're gonna have another, we're gonna have another meeting on September the 23rd, so hopefully after that meeting, I'll say.
Okay.
Makes it a pertinent question.
Okay, um, student board representative report, Ms. Ms. Sweet is not here. I will make time for her to give her report if she does, if she comes to the regular board meeting, um, we'll make we'll make time for her to do that then. Um, legislative report, Mr. Strobel.
Another meeting on the next one will be about the panel.
Okay. Um, and were there any other meetings that happened that we attended? No.
Not this, obviously, either.
Not, yeah, me neither. My my dance card is kind of empty lately. Um, so, uh, any public comment? Okay, um, we have our enrollment, our enrollment info was shared. Um, any any concerns or comments about the enrollment numbers? Um, any public comment on enrollment numbers? Um, curriculum and instruction, we had a brief meeting August 24th? Great, no? Oh, not, we, oh, yeah, we canceled it, didn't we? Never mind. Um, do you know when your next meeting is? Is it before the next, the this regular voting meeting?
Yeah, right before that.
Okay. Okey dokey. Um, extracurricular, we just had that.
Uh, yes, we met earlier. The big topic is the spectators at the sporting and other events, specifically the outdoor event that now the governor has allowed the 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 normal guidelines for emails that apply to 25 people indoors, 250 outdoors, it has allowed spectators to be able to attend in such a, except most of our outdoor events, soccer and the other events, field hockey shouldn't be a problem, however, football will still be a challenge at 250. The way that we see it right now is there will be about 25 spots available for people to attend. The thought is that we would offer that to the parents of the participants, starting seniors. We have, um, 14, 15 seniors in the class, and the football team, band, the cheerleaders offering tickets to them and then working through the other parents as we go throughout the season. There is a homecoming coming out and the thought is that the homecoming court then get 25 tickets for that event. Everything could change, um, the, um, legislation that passed, uh, some laws that could change the guidelines, and some government rules, that's, he is, that he will be, they have enough votes, so a variety of details, so we'll see what happens there, but, uh, for the next, at least the next couple of weeks, we have the guidelines in place, so we'll follow. The indoor events are still a challenge, the volleyball, there, we, at this point, especially, we have 25 people indoors, but doesn't count the bringing all substitutions. Some of them are in the hallway, we're gonna put, so it's a challenge. Uh, we have cameras coming to screen the events for the gym and for the field, they have not arrived yet, so wait.
All right, um, was there something else that we discussed? Did I miss something? Oh, just just?
I guess.
The the loss of a person at the, um, the trainer at the middle school.
The middle school trainer, uh, actually, Tower Health disbanded in the program, we had our middle school trainer, which is Tower Health, so their last day is coming down soon and we're actually looking to fill it, but we may have a short period without a trainer at the middle school. We have, that's gotta be created.
All right, and, um, so the next meeting will be before the next, uh,
Before the next.
Before the next committee, the whole, okay. Thank you, sir. Any public comment on any of the discuss stuff we discussed at the extracurricular committee meeting earlier today? Um, okay, moving on to facilities and transportation, which was.
Um, turn over the facility, um, that would be nice. And, um, we spent an awful lot of time, um, the transportation piece of it, um, a lot of challenges, um, lead decision or kindergarten, that was, uh, basically, we're not, um, the hybrid piece of it, um, that process, um, we lost, um, there was a couple of different pieces, like the technology, CFO, they should be different Joel, down person, um, they had seen the traditional, they could, you know, cleaning, uh, they'll vote it, new maintenance, now, how that all went, um, initial case, and I've seen it decided to be virtual, virtual in person, it was a hundred, so we gotta figure out how that happens. All the phone calls coming in, two parents, different households, um, I'm only on it for that was a state for job well done, amongst all the effects, um, there's just, you know, there's an awful lot that I do. But it's overall feeling, um, with SSC, Army for the transportation is, is I think just more fully the other than transportation, but because of the, you know, job order, we we were able to uncover this year, obviously, it's always a master plan, and initial training, there's another person who hired, Joe Joel's decision, so we're reevaluating that, we just try to get support here and they're straight, and they, they're both computer system, but then, on top of it, they don't have a computer system to help do all these routing, so there's a lot of challenges there, um, just as you're out, if you're planning, try to help, help this order, they're doing it by hand, which is pretty, pretty incredible. Um, the, uh, facility side, um, we felt that, um, under the circumstances that SSC, we still complement it, it's significantly improved, it's significantly better, um, and it was a problem, we have about two managers, they just hired a second manager who really helps out, sort of, first salary, they just create without, um, the best job they can, considering that their cleaning is not the same, I mean, they're having to clean hallways more frequently than ever, they're putting handrails and bar rails and desks, so there's an awful lot of cleaning things, I'm not sure if you see all, there's a lot going on in my, in my.
At the end of the day.
Yeah, there's a lot going on, and including where, obviously, um, uh, and, but, you know, the additional use cleaning, that's the other part, it's not just putting anything about, nothing but good things about professors, schools, teachers, and the whole, um, even the hours are a bit, you know, they, they remember, uh, sure, in high schools, they would shut down, so that was a massive undertaking, trying to get a new, ready one, get everything working and whatnot, but overall, we felt that everything, considering all the pieces that are been thrown into the, they, they going very good. And the maintenance continues of some of the different projects, the ACAC, their practices, a lot of the area that's going well, um, and the only more big thing is that it's coming, is that we're gonna have to do something official, and it's not cheap, so somewhere in the 90s, 100, 100, somewhere in that area, it's just a shock, there's a lot, so we're gonna get that, reevaluate, give us our best possible, that's what we need to do, so that we just try to patch this, relocate it, relocate this property properly, and, um, or, like, we'll buy another one, and we, uh, versus spending money, we're not really sure yet, I'm following the, we're gonna do that, so. And, um, one bad thing, and some one discussion, um, or transportation contract discussion, we would like to consider me, um, going, uh, going through that contract negotiations early, just waiting for the last minute, so my only question was, is why? And, um, so I found that, yeah, in the hallway, it's a, and it makes sense, um, we should consider a writing it in, there are large expenditures, buses, so, so actually, now, if you bring those towards the end of your contract, you're not gonna replace them with a whole bunch of stock if you potentially not have a job. So having that made me agree to negotiate it, could be a two inside, if you're like, I'm not suggesting anything, you have to really take a look at it, um, be able to help that balance out, I believe, about, so they make.
Or purchase decisions in terms of serving the district, um, the shape they're doing for a really, really long time, so, um, that was one of the things that brought a lot of people, a lot, um, that's it.
Okay.
Kevin, we have questions, can you, the scheduling system, that was down, um, do we own the scheduling system that was down? Is that the system that we own, is that outsourced, I mean, I thought we purchased that, I mean, how long was it down?
It's the transponders, and a couple of our computers went down, um, and it was one of our servers, it's gone through the shop.
It was Transponder, it wasn't conversing with Infinite Campus, and the new SMS was, which was Infinite Campus, it was a challenged, um, transponder, we had to get in contact them to do some type of backend patch, patch work, uh, to get that up and running, and every harness was a little more minimal and typical.
I mean, they put something, they load 100 kids and all those things, and I say it's all, it's.
I don't, I don't know how it was done, but I didn't, nothing but press with the bus, and thus far this year, the children are, please, for, I think, my kids on bus are two kids, and I'm sure that was possible, maybe I'm a little bit, but, um, I, it looks like they're doing, I can't remember, sorry, sorry.
The system's back up and running, are you usable?
Um, today, it won a lot, right? Yeah.
And there's a lot of the, is there anything going on during the day, and I heard it's pretty night, I think.
I can't speak to that, and we're not here, only that they were, and all were today, I mean, whether it's specific, I mean, it needs to be brought up in the news, um, in that area, um, just communicate, so, but, um, it's, it's.
Can I ask, um, the, um, the patch that you, uh, that the vendor gave for our system? Um, you know, I, and I, my husband's a computer programmer, so that kind of thing happens all the time, and I know it's it stinks for us, but, you know, it's not like, it, you know, that stuff happens with computer stuff all the time, but was the the patch that they did, is that covered under the vendor, um, maintenance and, um, assistance contract that we have with them, or do we have to pay them extra for the work that they just I'm I'm asking.
Is that on that because, are you, are those involved?
No, it's fair. I mean, we needed to get it fixed, uh, but I just didn't know, because we purchased it several years ago, I didn't know if our maintenance and assistance and training contract, you know, is even still in force, I didn't know.
We can get that, basically, back.
Okay.
I hope we don't have systems that have gone off support where they're unsupported, that, uh, people do that, but I.
But we might have a con, we might have a contract with them that, um, you know, because we purchased something that was different than what we had when they came in, they might have asked for extra money for the time that they had to put in, yeah.
Well, I, we might pay more upfront.
Yes.
For the supporters, right?
Yeah. And I'm not saying we shouldn't, I just think we should know, that's all. Um, I didn't mean to interrupt, but, um.
Part of it, we want to talk, um, say, servers went down, so it, uh, it's a combination of, uh, there.
So anything else from our, the committee meeting that we just had? I think that sounded.
I'm sorry, technology.
Oh, we'll we'll get there, we'll get there. We got it, we got a gap, catch a breath. Um, and next, next, uh, facilities meeting will be, um, before the next committee, the whole October 12th. Um, any public comment on anything we discussed with facilities and transportation? Okay, seeing none, um, but moving on to the finance committee, Mr. Miller.
Uh, we had a meeting, um, before the last, uh, meeting, um, I think we had one item on the agenda, I haven't called it.
The outsourcing of the tax.
Right.
Right.
On the agenda.
That's it, right, so all on the agenda for the meeting, it's all on the actions. And with the next meeting scheduled before two weeks from today.
Okay.
We'll start to get into planning.
All right, um, short and sweet, any comments, um, any questions for Mr. Miller or Ms. Haines from the board? Um, any, uh, comments from the public? Oh, yeah, go ahead.
Next, next meeting, um, there was a issue with security, a lot of stuff, how did it end up turning out?
I would think about the 65,000, and we probably will see that until sometime next year, I still believe, but I did read in, I, I redid the form to make sure that we, highlight the fact that we didn't receive the money, even though the calculations that we did. So we, I sometimes did it the other way, and they did, I know, it's, I have a digital document, and we did, everything, but the 65,000.
Okay, you were talking about that, it was, uh, two weeks ago, I think, you were coming up.
I'm talking about the last 65,000.
I'm late on this as well.
Okay, any comments from the public on finance? Moving on to policy review, I will take this, we had to cancel that meeting because of, uh, um, um, situation that happened before the meeting today, so, um, there's nothing to discuss, but it, the rescheduled meeting, it will go forward October 12th. Um, there were no, so there was nothing discussed at the meeting that didn't take place, um, and, um, nothing under first rating or second rating. I hate bugs, so, just FYI, however, when we came in here today, it was like 78 degrees, and so we opened up all the windows, I apologize, but it is what it is.
You get that? It's on your side.
Um, any, any com, any comments from the public on the meeting that never was? Okay, um, technology, Mr. Strobel.
Um, Infinite Campus Campus Training is now in use, of all parents, August 7th. Um, setting up online registration pretty soon, so they're, well, this fall. Um, summer projects, it was in plan for summer projects, did start the year, does not exist because of COVID screening app, video conferencing parks, which were experienced delays, and we want to make sure to clean out that, um, obviously noted, that's a challenge, I mean,
Oh, yeah.
These things are all water, and it's like, a lot of other things, like, you might buy wood, or some of these other products that are out there, COVID stopped a lot of the function, screws just weren't there, so all the screws go in, all the parts are built, and they're in the process of mounting, computers on there, and getting about 8, 10 people a day, on top of a backlog of stuff coming in, because now schools are open, so it's a challenge, and we appreciate, we're going to, we're trying to be basic, I think the work is, that's the challenge, we're, that's the job trying to catch up, the situation of the creation, of, um, things that are happening there. Internet service RFP, there was five responses for the RFP, um, we have reviewed, because it's a call, specific plan for December, um, digital learning initiative, personal development, um, working with facilities, members, we can host some work that happened, breaking, breaking technology, additional training will follow. Additional training will follow, full curve up school year. And if you know that Tracy's parents, Tracys, scheduled finding facilities member can review and devices to reinforce training, they would ask for, as they roll out. So we're rolling out a meeting and I'm not sure how many people.
Probably.
But I'm sure that's also something that's on the schedule. That's, is being done. And then just last, just receiving, now requests, help desk. Just trying to flatten that curve. So hopefully, see if we find requests next week, or third week, no surprise, meet one. Hopefully it changes.
Kevin, question on the internet ban, the third week, will you increase the ban?
Increase the bandwidth? Uh, no, so this would need to replace our existing service. So we're in a five-year range of the BCIU orbit. So they are outbid as far as like sort of replacing. And we also saw quite suggestive, bagging, quite as different amount of, of, of resources. So the way the cost benefits are, so they're resourcing, but they would not need to increase.
But we don't need to increase them?
What's that?
We don't have a need to increase them?
Not at this point. We have enough room for growth to accommodate this year. Obviously we're going to watch that throughout the school year since there was a fair amount of technology added, but that is not the goal of this, basically what you have to provide is that, address that, but that's necessary.
Thank you, Mr. Strobel, Mr. Matts. Any other questions from the board about the stuff discussed in technology? We'll have a meeting again before the voting meeting, the 20 something, 8th. Any comments from the public about technology? Seeing none. Moving on to old business, two, two minutes to pre-approved. Any concerns under old, and, no, any comments on that from the public? New business, 14. Oh, meeting, meeting scheduled for next year. As we did last year, we're going to go ahead and have a, have a meeting scheduled that will be a voting meeting in July. In years past, sometimes we didn't have one and then when we had to have an emergency one, we just posted it. I think it's better to have it scheduled and then cancel it if there's not a need. But, you know, something tells me there's always going to be something we need to talk about. So, so if there's any concerns about anything specific, either now or before we vote on it from the, from, from the board members, you know, I would say bring it to me or to bring it to Brett. Under that new business, any public comment? Or is there any concerns you want to talk about now? About the, the, what next year's scheduled for board meetings? Any public comment? Presentations from the public on any issues? Seeing, okay. You just waited until I was about to say seeing none, so I look dumb. Okay.
She's got to. I just want to say that I realize that you guys are all in chat, that you're all through and I appreciate what you're doing. So thank you, John. So at the end of each day, I give my kids an A R five, high five. If you're blowing, I'm going to, um, sign with decor, I guess. I'd like to run around the table and give you that all the way around.
All right. We're here for it. Thank you. Any other public comment, and I'm sure it won't be as fun as that was. Seeing none, do I have a motion to adjourn? Do I have a second?
A second.
Okay, we're adjourned. Thank you, everybody for coming.